I hope this thing stayed on. It did, yes. Other than refreshing, because I closed it. Na na na. You dressing up like Sparky?
Shit, I think I'm at a town. I am at a town that way.
Oh, no, really?
Parksville, yeah. The Cross.
Hmm? Here we go.
Yeah, that suggests.
Yeah, yeah. For sure.
Let's do it.
What's that?
Oh, wow, thanks for you.
I'd like to call the public hearing meeting of Monday, May 26, 2014, at six forty, almost six forty-five to order. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear public comments on bylaw number 1539 cited as the Callwood Land Use Bylaw Number 151, 1989, Amendment Number 139, Residential 6, R6 Zone, bylaw number 1539, 2014, and bylaw number 1538 cited as the Callwood Land Use Bylaw Number 151, 1989, Amendment Number 138, for 686 Donovan Avenue, bylaw number 1538, 2014. The general purpose of bylaw number 1539 is to amend land use bylaw number 151 by creating and adding a new zone, being the residential 6, R6 Zone. Uses permitted in the zone would include: single-family dwellings, secondary suites where the lot width is not less than 12 meters, home-based businesses, and accessory buildings and structures. The maximum lot coverage for residential buildings would be 40% of the lot. The minimum lot area would be 695 square meters, except that where suitably, suitable amenity contributions are provided. The lot size may be reduced down to a minimum of 300 square meters. The R6 Zone would also contain other regulations for the size and siting of buildings, and the general purpose of bylaw number 1538 is to amend land use bylaw number 151 to rezon the property at eight, or pardon me, 686 Donovan Avenue, more particularly described as Lot 1, Section 69, Esquimalt District Plan 9798, from the residential R1 Zone to the new residential 6, R6 Zone for the purposes of facilitating a subdivision creating up to eight single-family residential lots. That is what is before us this evening. Looking for approval of the agenda?
Second.
And we have gone through that public hearing statement, so we'll move on to the public hearing. So I will declare the public hearing open at this time. If there's anyone here to speak to the public hearing, this is your time.
I live in 1001 East Place in Victoria. I own the property at 3019 Pittsburgh Road, which is adjoining the Donovan property. I'm one of, I guess there's nine of us that are actually touching on this property. I'm a bit concerned about all this. We were away when the meeting was held on April 1st, though we didn't know anything about it, and I didn't know anything about this one until I received the notice from the people, which is quite all right. I'm kind of concerned with this zoning. Is this strictly for the Donovan property, or is it for anyone's property?
Yeah, it's not a, we're just here to hear your comments, but it is just for, tonight this is this property?
Just for this property. Okay. Now, I understand that an accessory dwelling is going to be, can be permitted under this rezoning as well, so is that, an accessory dwelling is that like a separate little home on the property? I don't know a lot of this, so I guess I'm here for input, so I, you know.
We have staff on that one.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. If I could offer myself, Acting Director of Planning in Burhill, and my colleague Efo Vanderkamp, Planner, we're both here to help you with your questions. So after the close of the public hearing, Efo can make himself available to help you with the questions.
I see. All right, I understand that. It does sort of have a bearing on what may be happening with the Donovan property. I'm also concerned about, I believe that there is no sewer plan for the next, near future, we'll say, for the property. So therefore, if this proceeds, will he be putting in septic tanks and septic fields on the property for these eight planned homes? It doesn't seem quite well so soon. What's the urgency of doing this rezoning? And because my property is backing onto it, I am, I am concerned about the parking, and the parking will be running adjoining my property, so there will, or our property, my husband's and mine, so there will be cars and noise and lights, and I realize that fences and all this can be built to accommodate it. I understand at the moment, five single-family lots may be built on, on the property as is, so why not go with that instead of the higher density, the almost three-stories houses that can be built in there and the secondary suites? That's getting a lot of density for the area. I think that's all I need to comment on now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Hi, my name's Lisa Lee Hive, and my husband is Jared. We just bought 3020 Volmer, so we back right on to that. We bought the house knowing that that property could be rezoned. Essentially, we have three concerns, some of which you touched on. One of our kind of major concerns is how the septic is going to go. Like, if you have eight houses there, how in the world are you going to put a septic field or septic plant? Like, you've got to have some sort of treatment plant. And so the only feasible thing that we kind of see is that sewers come in. Great. And then we're, I'm concerned, and I think you have more documents than I do, I'm concerned with how close a house, if it's three stories, is going to get to our, our property. So that's another one of our concerns. And then I just had one, and I forgot what it was. Nope, forgot it. Oh, the construction. I don't know if there's, like, you see a lot of construction projects falling through and not, people, whoever the investors are, not having enough money to finish, and then it just doesn't look very good. And, or if it's just prolonged for years and years and years, and we're stuck with our backyard, there's construction in our backyard all the time. And timing of construction. I'm, my husband's in the trade, so I'm pretty sure it's got to be Monday to Friday, and they're not going to be working on the weekends or late hours and making noise in your community. But that would be the other concern that I have.
Thank you.
My name is Pam McKean, and I live on Volmer Road and have done for 22 years. I would only make comments that I really don't object to development there. I'm a bit concerned about the height of the buildings, and also what the impact would be on the boulevard on Donovan, which is a real mess and really needs clearing up all along Donovan. It really is messy. Kids play there, and the weeds, and massive trees with branches falling all the time. So I wonder what the impact would be on Donovan, and if you allocate eight parking spaces for eight houses, you're going to have a lot of extra cars. Are they all going to be parking on Donovan? And I'm also concerned about the, what are you going to do about the sewer system and the height of the buildings? I think that's probably a main concern. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lori Mackay, and I live in, in Callwood, not far from, from this development. My husband and I would like to urge council to support this application for rezoning and for the proposed subdivision of the property. We support selected renewal of older residential areas in Callwood as a way of upgrading aging infrastructure, modernizing neighborhoods, increasing density with the municipality, and providing affordable housing for our young people. This project would provide housing for young families and others in a multi-unit complex. We live on Kildare Road, just around the corner from this proposed development. In our opinion, this would fit well into the neighborhood as owners, sorry, as owners in a strata ourselves, we recognize the value of living together in communities and sharing common infrastructure. As a volunteer for the Vancouver Island Strata Owners Association, I am particularly interested in the possibility Stratas in all their forms, including bareland strata, provide for rezoning a single-family lot into a lot for our, making more individual housing available for our increasing population. Rezoning existing family, single-family lots to permit multifamily homes is a win-win way for Callwood to achieve its goals of densification and renewal without contributing to urban sprawl. I have discussed this development with the Russells and support this application, and I urge council to support it as well. Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
Jared, with 3020 Volmer, my wife just spoke. I'm worried about the condensing of the neighborhood. We're in a nice character kind of community, and when you, like they said, if you get cars going in and out, there's kids at play right now, and it's just going to put our kids at risk in the future of just, you know, Donovan becoming more populated, populated. And not only that, but like I said, it's the character homes that are going in and out of there. We can't have cookie cutter houses like we do up in West Hills and Bear Mountain. You know, you condense these people together, just creates outrage altogether. You know, you get up in Bear Mountain, nobody's happy in those homes, it seems like. I have lots of friends that live up there. You know, they regret the situation. It's all about property. Build four or five on this lot, fine, put eight in there, it's going to be a problem. So I just see it as just getting too many people in there, there's too many cars. Like you said, it's all about the kids. Like, I want to have a family, not worry about my kid throwing a ball across the street and accidentally running across some kid screaming him by and hitting him, right? So that's my main, main concern, so.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Good evening, my name's Glenn Brown. I live just down the street from the development. Been there since, at 7-Eleven Donovan. I've been there for seven years. I'm, just like the council members know that I'm in support of the development. Two concerns I have is, I think the development, I would hope that the money spent would be to help fix up the sidewalks and the, the street scape. Because I would like to see the curbs and sidewalks on the streets all through Callwood. I think it looks great. The other concern I had was, I would rather see sewers in there, and I know it's a cost factor for everything, but my question to the underground department engineering is, how, how does anyone go about, if there's a lot of people on the street plus, plus this development that would like to see sewers, how do you get everybody together to, you know, put a proposal forth? Because I've knocked on a few doors that are nothing to do with the development, but possibly on route for a sewer system. And if I could put enough people together, rather than have septic fields everywhere, and the old houses are, a lot of them are 40 years old, their tanks are going to be going, so they're going to have to do something with those. They're spending money, and it'd be much better to put it into a sewer system, but I haven't, I've missed the other meetings, so I might be a little bit dark on that. Anyway, one more time. Thank you.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, just say that I can speak with a gentleman offline after this.
Sure. So Glenn, our deputy engineer, will have a conversation with you around the sewer plan?
Hi, my name's Dave Citra. I own 661 Kelly Road and adjoining property. A lot of what I was going to say tonight has already been covered. Basically, speaking in favor, I think it's important for a municipality to weigh carefully the information of a new direction. To consider the effects of its decision on the social fabric of a community in short and long term is an important task. I've watched in this process for a while, and I believe that Callwood has taken the time to consider the new vision for its municipality, and in support of small, careful developments. Mr. Bill Randall has also taken time and consideration to work with neighbors, inviting their opinions and input to shape his vision in concert with the municipality. As an owner of the adjoining property on 661 Kelly Road, I'd like to speak in favor of the overall plan to develop the property on 686 Donovan Avenue. This plan will breathe new life into an established neighborhood, offering a chance to establish a younger, new lifestyle while embracing Callwood's individual vision of a progressive municipality. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to this issue on the public hearing?
I have a, a letter from a resident who wanted to provide some input. Do you want me just to give it to you, or would you like me to read it up to you?
Is it lengthy, Mr. Randall, or?
No.
Then maybe read it for the benefit of those who are in the audience?
Dated today, the City of Callwood, Mayor and Council, Public Hearing on the Rezoning Application of 686 Donovan. I have gone over with Bill Randall his rezoning application for 686 Donovan Avenue, and I think it's a great idea. The plan fits within the OCP and helps put Callwood in the right direction. I ask that Mayor and Council to please approve the final readings on this application. Signed, Jean-Lena, 3336 Hatley Drive, Callwood, DC.
And if you have a copy of that, though, I'm sure a recorder would retain. Anything from yourself?
To those that do know me, my name is Bill Randall, and I am the applicant for rezoning of my property at 686 Donovan. I wish to thank council for its approval of my application and bringing it to a public hearing. I'm asking council to please complete with approval the final readings on this application. As we know, infilling plays a crucial part in a city's goal to grow positively within the standards of its official community plan. New growth means new infrastructure, like sewers, improved water mains, and attractive aesthetics. It also brings much-needed revitalization to an older neighborhood with increased land values, and that benefits the city. Development along the Kelly Road area will create a more Development along the Kelly Road area will create a more efficient use of municipal infrastructure like transit, utilities, roads, rec. centers, and parks. New development can enhance the viability of local schools, community centers, shops, local businesses, and services. In short, municipalities are recognizing more and more the positive points on new positive change within older neighborhoods and the good it can provide their community. This is a good application, and I am not alone in believing it's a good for Colwood and that it's good for the community. I have been a long-term Colwood resident and a paramedic fortunate enough to work in the west shore. Believing in my community, I have given it thousands of hours of volunteer time. Consequently, I have a vested interest in making this a good Colwood project. In short, this is a good, positive direction for the City of Colwood and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? And I finally got the link to open up, so I just wanna follow up and read here, and if there's, and I'll give one more calling for any comments. The function of council at this public hearing is to listen to you rather than debate the merits of the proposed bylaws. After the public hearing has concluded, council may, without further notice, give whatever effect council believes proper to the representations made at this hearing. As a matter of information, the bylaws are on the agenda this evening. For consideration, please be reminded there will be no further opportunity to speak to those bylaws during, to council during that time. The opportunity is now, so I will give another call for anybody from the public that would like to make comment on this application. And seeing none, then I will close the public hearing, and we'll move into our regular meeting of council.